Moving on to our next item, which is the fiscal year 2024-25 budget development presentation for the general fund.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Gretchen Johnson, your Finance Director. Tonight, I am going to be presenting an update and requesting feedback and direction related to the status of our fiscal year 2425 budget development. By way of brief background, we provide that we periodically check in with your council during each budget year. You last received a presentation on March 11th, 2024, from the city's financial consultant of the fiscal year 2324 mid-year financial update. The mid-year presentation had a projected deficit of 1.7 million. This is a deficit that began in fiscal year 2223 and carried into fiscal year 2324. This necessitated the planned use of reserves of 3.2 million, leaving approximately 5.4 million remaining in reserves as of June 30th, 2024. Unfortunately, this wasn't a one-time problem, as the projected multi-year deficit showed a structural problem up to $850,000 year-over-year. As your new Finance Director, I did not want to present the fiscal year 2425 budget development update without trying to understand what happened. I've spent considerable time over the past two months researching budget and financial materials and speaking with city staff in order to make sense of the city's structural deficit. Unfortunately, as the stones were turned and new revenue projections and expense requests came in, the structural deficit became worse at about 1.3 million year-over-year versus the original 850,000 year-over-year. Additionally, the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget, as of a week ago, which we continue to refine, reflects a deficit of just below 2 million at 1.974 million. And with less than a few weeks to deliver the proposed budget to your council, this deficit will not resolve in such short order. Therefore, we are posed to recommend further use of one-time reserves and a reallocation of one-time ARPA or your American Recovery Plan Act funds. But before we discuss our recommendations and request your council's direction, I'd like to go over the causes of why I believe we're in this situation. So how did we get here? First is a significant sales tax decline. In fiscal year 2122, we experienced over a $2 million spike in sales tax revenue. And though it's easy to look back now and see it was clearly a spike, those in charge of city finances at the time used this spike as the new normal after COVID, when formulating recommendations to your council about spending in future years. This assumption was greatly flawed and possibly reckless. These recommendations, as you'll see in the coming slides, mostly came in the form of additional staffing and negotiated labor contracts. Sales tax receipts are a major revenue source for the city and make up approximately 45% of our total revenues. Any fluctuations in sales tax revenue impacts our bottom line immediately. It's a volatile situation to be so reliant on sales tax, given economic and consumer changes over time. Not to mention, we have only one major entity generating 40%, almost half of that 45% total in revenues. Not a coincidence, then, does our look back at fiscal year 2122 reflect a surplus of just over 2 million, the same amount of sales tax increase. Unfortunately, it appears our predecessors used the sales tax growth to project the future and grew the city too fast by recommending additional staff and contracts, implementing market-study wage adjustments, and by negotiating compensation packages for existing staff. Existing personnel costs for fiscal year 2425 make up 61% of the city's general fund at 12.2 million, which includes the return of our unfunded CalPERS liability now at 300,000. All other costs make up 39% or 7.8 million of the city's general fund. But it's important to note that up to 50% of those other costs are unavoidable expenses in the areas of CalPERS debt obligation, bond payments, insurances, utilities, attorney services, information technology, and also grants, which typically come with revenue offsets, and the cost of doing business for services and supplies, such as CPIs for contracts and inflation. The point is that there is very little remaining in discretionary costs that can be avoided. To further support my understanding of the beginning of our deficit in fiscal year 2223, after the one-year spike in sales tax in fiscal year 2122, I conducted an analysis of expenses by department and identified the major causes of the deficit. In summary, I was further convinced these additions and adjustments of staff and salaries and benefits and an increase in contracts in fiscal year 2223 were and continue to be the main reasons our costs exceeded revenues that year by a whopping 3.6 million. That is, the use of 100% of our $2 million surplus plus overspending by an additional 1.6 million. Furthering my pursuit for information, I did the same analysis to compare fiscal year 2223 to fiscal year 2324, when the deficit continued in the amount of 1.57 million. Along with continued declines in sales tax revenue, expenses continued to rise due to multiple changes in staff, negotiated labor and benefits agreements, and significant wage adjustments based on market conditions of surveyed larger cities. I do not want to say that those changes to staff and agreements were not necessary in order to attract candidates to our vacant positions for our recruitments, further the city's ability to grow economically and improve services to our community. However, the changes took place too fast based on incorrect assumptions about our primary revenue sources. Lastly, for comparison, I prepared a year-over-year of the current fiscal year 2324 projected costs compared to the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget as it currently stands. With another year upon us of previously negotiated labor agreements that increased salaries effective July 1st, 2024, we continue to face insufficient revenues to cover our costs. To the credit of our department heads, most were able to submit proposed budgets with many reductions in discretionary costs. The net result is a preliminary proposed budget with a deficit of 1.97 million. There's more work to be done to reduce this deficit prior to returning to council in June with a proposed budget. Department heads have already submitted reductions over the past few days. Even so, the financial outlook is unnerving. Revenues are not projected to return to levels seen during the spike in fiscal year 2122 until beyond our forecast model, even with including normal revenue increases. The expenses projected into the future are based on 93 existing funded positions at status quo costs as of July 1st, known other cost increases, and modest costs for inflation. Absent change in continuing to use one-time solutions for ongoing expenses, our city's general fund reserves would be depleted by fiscal year 2728 or four years. That said, we must correct our course. The deficit can only be controlled by a few long-term solutions. Adjusting employee costs and securing new forms of revenue are the main ones. As a step to curtail new employee costs, the city manager implemented a hiring freeze in April for vacant positions. The city has four vacant positions that are impacted by this freeze, but ongoing discussions about operations are fluid, but those positions are one finance technician, one police officer, one dispatcher, and one firefighter. New general fund revenues, though nominal, are coming to fruition in the form of fire and permit fees and new development. We are also discussing other revenue possibilities that will be harder to achieve, if achievable at all, over the long term. Most all require community engagement and support and have been previously discussed as options for the city. Though these revenue ideas are not new, revisiting them now is timely as we determine the future of our city. As stated earlier, the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget is being prepared with a deficit of 1.9 million to be resolved before bringing a balanced budget to the council next month. We do intend to reduce the 1.9 million deficit before returning with the proposed budget, and department heads have already been finding ways to reduce their submitted budget requests by deferring costs that aren't critical to safety and core services. We are also evaluating our ability to maximize cost allocation of general fund costs being charged out to other non-general funds, such as sewer, transit, and airport. We are also reviewing the newest frozen positions and may remove their budgeted costs entirely from the budget. That said, we do not anticipate reducing the deficit to zero and therefore are poised to recommend the following one-time solutions. These amounts will change, but the recommended solutions are likely to remain the same. They include using additional general fund reserves of approximately 1 million. This reduces remaining reserves to 4.3 million, or about 21% of total expenditures, which is below the city's financial management policy of 30%. The use of reserves would come from economic uncertainties, employee unfunded liability, and the pension unfunded liability. In addition, we are recommending to reallocate $881,000 in previously designated one-time ARPA funds towards the budget deficit. Those reallocations would redirect 750,000 out of the original earmark of 1 million from our two business improvement districts in Old Town and Downtown, and the balance of 131,000 from the city's scanning of paper records. Moving forward after tonight, we will finish preparing the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget and return June 10th with our final recommendations and, based on your feedback, return on June 24th for budget adoption. We have also invited our external auditors to present the final audit of fiscal year 2223, which is just wrapping up, and that will further inform the city's financial position. We are taking seriously the expediency necessary to take action surrounding our structural deficit and will return to your council as new information becomes available. However, this roadmap gives you an idea of what you can expect. We are planning an update of steps taken in August and in September and October, we will provide a fiscal year 2324 year-end update and begin a regular quarterly financial update beginning in October. And with that, I will turn it over to council for discussion and feedback.
Yeah, I just wanted to, since Gretchen's gone through the PowerPoint, I'd like to do some editorializing quickly. Can you go back to the, to the big orange and blue slide, the 2425 budget development update?
What page is that?
It's on page three of your packet.
Ouch, thank you.
Yeah, one more.
One more?
Two more.
Two more.
Yeah, so if you look at this slide, this tells the picture of the reason why we're at where we are, right? So if you look at 2122, we had a $2 million surplus, and then within one year, we added almost $3 million in costs. And those $3 million in costs come from a variety of different reasons. But council was provided erroneous information and frankly incompetency on a bunch of different issues related to personnel expenses. And so we are now here trying to resolve this issue. The other thing I wanted to point out is if we were on track with getting our audit done on time and you would have had the audit presented to you, you would have seen this deficit last year. But we haven't had that done yet. The audit's actually not done yet. And on top of that, it also hasn't actually been presented to council in the past, at least for the past three years. So that's all changing, and we're going to present the, the auditor's going to come and do a presentation to you. I'll tell you, when I sat down with the auditor in November, I think it was, they said, you know, do you have any serious concerns? I was like, yeah, I do. And I don't know exactly what the concern is because I don't have the information to say what it is, and so I'm relying on the auditor to give that to us. And they didn't have the ability to get the audit finished because we didn't have somebody here to, who knew what they were doing to present that to us. So I think that the situation that we have is obviously dire. Staff is taking it very seriously. Department heads are taking it very seriously. And I just want to point out that $3 million increase, basically in two years, that got us to the situation we're in. That gray line is our reserves, and you can see it's just like a valley, right, to the floor. And that's the reason why we're at. We're proposing using these one-times funds, you know, using our reserves and reallocating ARPA. The fact is that if we continue on this kind of the same path, the city will be out of money in four years. And we can't obviously have that. And so we're looking to fix this year's budget using those one-time reserves, but the structural deficit of 1.3 is going to remain, and we need to address that. It's going to take, it's going to be a painful process, I think. But we have to go through that process and make sure that we're able to basically recalibrate what the city is doing and figuring out the services that we could provide with the money that we have to provide them with. It's not only cuts, we also need to look at the other revenue enhancement that we talked about, but it's a, it's a multi-pronged thing that we need to do, and we need to get it done quickly. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same situation next year. And frankly, if we are in that same situation next year, then we have not done our job to the residents of this community. So that's my editorialization.
Thank you for that presentation. It's, I know all of us are very concerned and upset, and this came as a surprise to all of us. It's a little bit frustrating on the council's side when we are giving incorrect information to make decisions based on, because we think that we're doing something that's in the best interest of the city and we can, we aren't going to be double-checking financial numbers and things like that. We have to trust the subject matter expertise, and it's unfortunate that the city manager and the head of our financial department grossly overestimated taxes and underestimated costs and caused this. However, I will say is that both of those people are gone. We have very competent people in those positions right now that found the problem, and I have every confidence that we can, now that we have identified it, come up with a solution. It may, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but I think that we can, we're, we're all in the same boat together, and we can work together to figure out a solution to the problem so that way we can move forward and, and, and fix this for, for next year's budget. But I, it's one of those things that we have to deal with, the problem that we have at hand. We have some suggestions for how we could possibly deal with that problem for right now, that we're, that are, they're not great solutions, but we don't have a lot of options, given that the budget is coming next month, and we have to make those solutions. Council, do you have any specific questions that you would like to ask right now? Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman Doudin-Cavil.
Thank you. In your slide, you, you put the causes, and then in the staff report, they were a little bit different or a little more detailed, I think. It says the primary causes in the staff report. The sales tax decline, previously negotiated labor costs, return to CalPERS unfunded liability, services and supplies adjustment to trending cost, public, what it, so, okay, that's inflation, basically. Public works and road overlay expense and fire equipment purchases one time. So my, my, my question, part of my questions involve, are these all spent then? So is the road overlay, that money is all spent?
Yes, yes, and that was part of the mid-year where this was first identified, that there was an overspend of road overlay. And now we're not going to be including road overlay this in the new budget 2425 because of that.
Okay, and then the fire equipment purchase, that's, that was done, that was the fire truck?
That, that is actually talking about the self-contained breathing apparatus. And that is supposed to occur at the very end of this current fiscal year, perhaps into the 2425. Either way, it's going to be a one-time, and it was a planned use of general fund reserves for that.
Okay, and how much is that, approximately?
Around the 300,000 range.
And again, I don't really have any more questions. I can wait with discussion or?
Yeah, we'll start with questions.
Okay.
We'll do questions first, and then we'll, we'll go into discussion, just to make sure no one has any additional questions. Councilwoman Dowden-Cavill, do you have any questions?
You know, I appreciate the fact that I had an opportunity to sit down with, with Gretchen last week, and I asked a lot of questions then. I have lots and lots of comments, but I'll reserve those until after questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holmes, do you have any questions? I know that they, we've, we've all had this presentation given to us and time to answer questions.
Yeah, it's my understanding that there have been some grant applications for the police department and the fire department. And from FEMA, I guess. So where, where do we stand on, on those now?
I can speak to the grants that we currently have, like our police department has a few grants that we've been regularly applying for, or we're kind of mid a multi-year process. So in the police department, we have a POP officer grant, and that's running us about 396,000 for our portion of the match for those four officers. We have a grant that pays for a school resource officer that we apply for annually to about $100,000 each year. And then we have a tobacco grant as well that covers a portion of an officer, I believe. So in terms of a FEMA grant, I'm not, that's not jumping off the top of my brain, is something I've seen come through. The fire department grants are typically for equipment or contracts and not for staff.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, I know we were asking for appropriations from Congressman Kylie. Do we know when we'll find out about those?
We haven't heard yet. There was some correspondence that came through on the fire side. We asked for like 3, 200 and something thousand, 300 and something thousand for the cost of the SCBA's. There was a little bit of correspondence that came back that said that if they do fund it, they wouldn't be able to, I think they said it wouldn't fund 100%. I haven't heard anything back on the police side yet. So there's, there's two different grants. The police grant was for, or the police request was for radio equipment.
Great, thank you. Is that all the questions you had? Councilwoman Holmes?
For the moment, yeah.
For the moment, yes. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Sarah Sammons?
Well, I also sat with Gretchen last week, and I just, first of all, just want to thank you for doing the deep dive that you did. And, but no, any questions I had were, were asked and answered. It's, you know, really the questions are, how do we fix it? Not necessarily how we get here, and that requires us talking. So I have no questions, but I'm happy to move on to discussion.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I think we all, thank you for, you, you came in here and just dug right into and helped us all understand what was going on. We really appreciate that, so thank you very much.
It was important to do so for the benefit of the city and everyone, so.
Thank you so much. Council, do you think we should do public comment before we do our discussion so we can share?
I wanted just to make a couple of statements, if I could, and then, I mean, there, this is going to be a lengthy item. We're going to have a lot of discussion back and forth between now and then. But I, I just need to say this for the purpose of the record, and I do, I appreciate that our city managers indicated that, you know, the city council acted on, on inadequate, woefully inadequate data. And, but I also respect the fact that the buck stops with us.
Absolutely, yes.
And I take responsibility for making a decision to approve a budget and to approve expenses and to approve, you know, the accompanying documentation. And it's, it, it just makes me sick as someone that worked so hard to ensure, you know, that fiscal consistency and sustainability. And just, you know, talking when we went through labor negotiations and all these other growths and asking staff over and over again, do we have the funding ability, the sustainability? Is that here? Yes, part of the problem, as our city manager indicated, is that audit didn't get done. And we asked over and over for that audit, and it didn't get done, and we, we couldn't even see that information. But I still, again, I take responsibility. It's incredibly frustrating to see us where we are. We knew that we had the spike in sales tax because of COVID. We all knew that. We sat up here and we talked about that because the online tax, our contribution, or actually, we received more in online sales tax because of the brick and mortar, the way the formula is, the brick and mortar companies, they were all closed. Disneyland was closed, hotels were closed. They were not collecting sales tax. So their percentage of online sales, sales tax decreased and ours increased. We talked about that. But again, over and over again, we were assured that there were the financial means by which to, to support the decisions that we made. And it's just incredibly infuriating to find ourselves in the situation now. So I just, for the purpose of the record, I do take responsibility for that. I, I don't want to, again, bad data, but at the end of the day, rest assured, the next time we have a request to grow something, I'm going to ask to show me, show me the money. Show me exactly where. I'm, I just, and I do appreciate, we've got great staff in place now. We have mechanisms in place. One thing we don't still have in place is that balance or that check and balance with the budget. We had the, the error with our paving dollars. And we don't even have any software in place that would have checked that. And, and there was somebody saying, oh, we've got extra money and we can do extra paving. And if we had had the software in place, we would have been able to see that, you know, and so that's just unfortunate. Again, I have complete faith in our, our staff now, but we're going to have to make some incredibly difficult decisions moving forward. And I hate that because I, I don't like being put in that position. We are here. We, we have to move forward. But it's, again, I just, it, it's infuriating, and I know you all share that concern. Michelle, you weren't here, so you're off the hook, but I, I know you understand. You understand, and now you're here. And so now you have to deal with what we all have to deal with. But, you know, it's, it, yes, you, you do, you hear, I know you. So, you know, we, we've got to make some very, very difficult decisions. I appreciate the, the staff's recommendation to get us out for this year. The bigger discussions really are going to be, what are we going to do in the future? But I just, again, wanted to make sure it was clear. I, I own the decision that I made. I do agree, there was some bad information. And it's just incredibly frustrating because, again, I remember sitting in, even in closed session, asking, do we have the funds to sustain this? Yes, yes, yes. And that clearly wasn't the case, so we can, any other comments too? But I'll, I have other comments to make, but I just wanted to get that.
I also just real quick, wanted to thank the staff for their transparency in bringing this in a public forum right away. I, that sometimes people try to figure stuff out while not bringing it up, and you've been transparent from the start and been bringing us in, and so we really appreciate that. And also the, the, that nobody has been talking about kicking the can down the road, that everyone knows that we need to come up with a plan quickly and that we don't want this to be an ongoing problem. And that, that's something that not every public agency does, and I think that the council is all committed to figuring something out so that way we don't, taking the steps needed in order to not kick the can down the road and to, to solve the problem. So I appreciate that, too.
Yes, thank you. And I, ditto to Councilwoman Dowden-Cavil. But I also think that this is a good reminder that we have to diversify. We have been too reliant on sales tax, business, small businesses, Nella Oil. So we have to diversify, and I think some of the proposed suggestions are very important to take serious. We, we've been putting off and saying, talking about, you know, let's, let's have, let's raise our TOT, let's put it out for about, but we can't wait anymore. We, we can't put off. We have to act. So now's the time to act because we're, we're going to be, and I, and I hate to always do this analogy. Auburn Union went through the same situation, and part of it was they just cut, cut, cut. And in, in business, you have to grow, you have to look, look ahead, and I think that's what we need to do. We, we do need to diversify, and this is a very good reminder. And that's, I, I think some of these suggestions we'll be talking about, but I'm very supportive of that, so.
Well, I certainly wasn't here during the time those decisions were made. But I do know firsthand what it's like to be given erroneous information and to have a business officer that gave us not only grossly erroneous information, but stuff that's been audited over and over again. And now, you know, it's no secret where Auburn Union is where they is now. And another reason why I feel it's important to bring that up is I bring that perspective of also being helpful. Now, with the school district, you really only have one revenue. You can diversify, but your revenue is students. It's people. You don't get anything else. And at least for us, we have ways. We have ways to look at things differently, to see if we can diversify. We've already taken some great steps and really being proactive. Any decision we make from here on out, and I am, I'm responsible now, just as much as y'all are. I'm responsible now, just as much as y'all are. Um, any decision we make is gonna be hard, it's gonna be gut-wrenching, we're gonna have long nights and long days. Um, but you know, I I truly believe we're part of a team that's committed, all of us, so. That's it. I just want to know that I do feel what you're feeling. I've been there, and I'm really sorry.
Councilman Holmes, did you want to say anything?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to move on to public comment? Okay, uh, we're gonna open this side up for public comment? Yeah.
Mayor, council members, Connie Brocker. Uh, this is heavy. Um, I just want to say that um several years ago, I was handed something that was not my fault. But I had to deal with all of the fallout, and it was all financial. And I sold everything to deal with debt and to start over. And as I hear this, I am just so sick to my stomach because it's remembering back to how heavy that was and what it, how it impacted my life. And so I would just say that the best avenue that I perceive is, and I'm just gonna say this, get on our knees and cry out to God and ask for his wisdom, because that's what I did, and he directed, he provided, he, when I was just in the throes of weeping in the middle of the night, saying, God, I don't even know what to do. He had all the answers, and he has carried me. So seeking God Almighty is a definite option. But second would be, um, I would recommend cutting what you can cut. And I know, um, Councilwoman Amara, you you want to increase revenue and you can do what you can do to diversify, but cutting can alleviate some of the pain. You know, if you have cancer, you can cut it out oftentimes and stop the flow. If you don't cut it out, it will continue to weigh heavy on everything in our community, you know? And um, I will be praying for you all with these decisions. Um, and so that's my comment. I don't know where to go from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, so Mayor, yes, the first I heard of this, uh, a couple hours of the meeting, and uh, you know, I'm up here, you know, demanding our ARPA funds, but uh, I understand you guys uh of the situation, and uh, we were at three million for the ARPA funds, it was COVID relief money. Um, we were at one million in Old Town. That got cut for, I'm not sure what circumstance, it was gonna go to Wi-Fi or network uh, movement, and then that got dropped, and so the money got swallowed up again. So we end up with five hundred thousand dollars for our, for our streetscape project. You know, going through the process, uh, you know, and since COVID, with our whole um organization down in Old Town, it it is gut-wrenching, you know, when you you say, hey, we have this, we're gonna do this, and then we can't do that. You know, we're gonna do a small park for twenty thousand that we had some other grant money, and then that money was like, no, we can't, and then. Anyway, here we are. It's it's tough, as we all know. It just seems like a Band-Aid, you know, I really feel like you guys know it's a longer haul here that you guys are, you're battling, but um, to just take something that was already gonna be something and then, and just kind of throw it into this June or whatever you guys have your deadline by, um, that's kind of hard to swallow for Old Town and and Downtown. I mean, I I wish I would have spent the money earlier, and then we won't be having this conversation, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. I guess.
Councilwoman Mara, or?
I guess I.
You want to go first or?
I I was just gonna say, you know, to the whole issue on ARPA. When the city manager mentioned to me about reallocating those ARPA dollars, I just, my heart sank for Old Town and Downtown because we've just worked so hard to make those areas better with with the funding and the plans, and I just, my heart just sank. And um, you know, at at this point, I I'm just not sure how else we can achieve the savings we need in forty-five days. That's, that's the problem. I mean, even if we were to cut a staff person, I mean, it's just, it's 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 just incredibly, incredibly disappointing because we have that whole plan with the streetscapes for Old Town and Downtown, and we were able to implement part of that streetscape with redevelopment dollars earlier on. Um, but we've never been able to finish the rest of the plan because we never get money.
And 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 I would agree, because what's gonna happen is we'll have another plan that's gonna sit on the shelf and get dusty and nothing will happen, and I I share exactly what you're saying. I I've asked almost everybody I can think of, is there any other money we can come up with to help us achieve what we want to achieve here? Because I'm not, really not very supportive. I I just, I I would not like to see the ARPA funds go away. It, and I, and I think Brad's a hundred percent correct. It's basically used money, and now we're pulling it away.
The the only problem is, and again, I I hate to see that be pulled away, but I I just don't see any other way except for reserves, and that's the concern is that we're, you know, those reserves, we know we've got some incredibly difficult decisions next, for the next budget. We just have incredibly difficult decisions, and we have got to preserve those reserves. And um, I just don't, it it pains me, really. It pains me to have to use those money, but I just don't see, I don't see, I mean, that's a, that's a, what is the amount again, Sean, the ARPA money?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is um, you know, the ARPA money was given to us by the federal government for the purposes of helping the city during COVID. That's what those monies were meant for. The monies were to assist the city. And we had three point four million dollars, I think, or it was about that, three point four million, I think, ARPA?
Yeah.
Somewhere around there. And uh, we came up with a whole recipe of how we were gonna spend that, and we we talked about it, and we had, we talked about allocating some for Downtown and Old Town for the purposes of enhancement. And um, because at that time, again, our fiscal situation was different. And we thought that we could afford that, and and it adds benefit, and it adds benefit to us. I I get that because it's economic development, and there, we have a return.
Yes.
There's a return, and so we drew that nexus, and we made that decision. And now I just, I I just don't know how we get around that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'd I'd.
So is there any other one-time?
The the only one-time money that we have is reserves, and if you, if we continue to deplete, to deplete reserves, then we are on this kind of spiral of potentially having does it mean zero, you know what I mean? Like, we just.
No, I I certainly understand that.
Yeah, so, and so, I mean, the idea of not building something in Old Town that's gonna have a place for people to come and hang out and do stuff to me is, I I certain, I certainly don't like that idea at all, right? I mean, when I started, when I started here, I was told that we had a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus going in at twenty-four, twenty-five, and then each year after that was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in surplus. So how somebody could be two hundred million dollars off, I just like floors me, but the fact is that we're here now, and this is my problem to fix. It's not, and we could put, you know, blame and all that stuff, it is what it is. But Gretchen and I are here in front of you, trying to offer potential solutions, and none of them are good. Right? And so the idea of taking more reserve out to me is frankly a little bit frightening. And when I'm looking at a one point three million dollar deficit, I'm looking at thirteen people, ten people, whatever that, or figuring out other cuts that we have to make, right? But I'm, I'm to the point where I'm, I mean, equating dollars to people at this point and figuring out how to recalibrate what we're doing, providing as much service as we can, but at the same time, with the money that we have. And so, you know, the 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 cha, the, the idea of taking out of reserves, that's, there's, that's an option that council can follow. I would not recommend doing that. It it kills me to know that we're not gonna be able to do something in an Old Town and Downtown. We will end up getting all the plans finalized, and so we'll have a project that's shovel-ready, and then, you know, down the road, if we're able to figure out our budget situation, and and we start, you know, figuring out things that we can do again. But we've also got a ton of deferred maintenance. We need fire trucks, we need all this stuff, and it's like the, you know, I, my, my comment all the time is we have like infinite problems of finite solutions, and our finite solutions are shrinking rapidly at this point, and the finite, infinite problems are growing even more infinite.
It's just such a grand number. I mean, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I agree, Sean, the only other alternative is reserves, and that scares me. That scares me, and that's why I can support so that, so moving the, those monies. The ARPA, not the revenue, not.
Yeah, I I, I mean, our, our reserves are there in times of an emergency. This is an unexpected emergency. I'm glad that the council has been, at least hasn't left forethought to have enough reserves that we have the ability to use some. The ARPA money was originally allocated to the city to help the city with their financial issues. Um, we didn't understand that we had them because of what was going on at the time. But um, but that's where that is. What I, we have a history in the city of just saying we can't afford things and just kind of letting them go away. I'm wondering if we could view this as we're using this money, but we'd still like to do these projects, and we can maybe out, if, once our financial situation
One hundred percent.
If we could commit to allocating this money back to these projects at, like, a certain amount per year, we put in the savings account for Old Town and Downtown projects or something like that until this money is repaid. So I don't know how we can exactly, but I I'd rather view it as we're using this now, it's an emergency situation, and the ARPA money has to be used in a certain timeframe, so that also works out. But doesn't mean that we can't allocate money from our general fund if we're doing better in the next year or two back to this purpose. It doesn't mean the project has to be entirely gone. It just means we can't afford it at this very moment.
Madam Mayor, to that, I was just gonna say that perhaps in our budget-building exercise, there can just be a line item maybe for OTBA, and I mean, it's gonna be zero right now, but at least it's, there's a line item in the budget to keep us, to keep that.
We want to keep that promise.
Yes, to keep that memory, that that, as a reminder, you know, that that that's there and that we made a commitment, but again, I I just can't, I just can't in good faith.
I don't think that, right now is not the time, but I do think that there have been many years where we've had surpluses. And so I think this, this would be a good thing to commit to when we have that surplus again.
Is the project um for Old Town? Um, you, they, so they're, they still have two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand, Old Town?
Um, I I don't remember the exact amount, but we're yeah, three hundred and eighty thousand.
And how much is the the project to complete the project?
We don't, we don't have the engineering set done, so we don't have an estimate. If, but yeah, we don't have, we don't have an actual estimate on what the cost will be. I've been looking at, I think we could get a lot done there for the amount of money that we had, but without the engineer's estimates to go on, we don't, we don't know. And that was the commitment that we made to council. If you remember, we talked about this, and we, and it was, you know, we'll get the engineering done, get the, basically, an estimate, engineer's estimate, bring it back to council and have council say, yes, we want you to do this, or no, we want you to do something else. Uh, when we talked about the, the ARPA, the downtown, the Old Town project.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm just throwing this out. Well, I mean, what if, what if we split it, you know, three hundred and fifty from the um reserves and let the two districts have three, three seventy-five, three seventy-five?
Well, we're, right now, we're taking three hundred from economic uncertainty, five hundred thousand from employee unfunded liability, and two hundred and fifty from pension and funded liabilities, so the reserves are being depleted by that's what, seven fifty, three hundred by over a million dollars as it is.
And we still have, how much in reserve then?
We have five point.
Next year, too.
Five point four or something like that.
It's, I, I have a hard time saying that we use any more money. It's, I I I appreciate the hard work and the projects that they've been developed. Those are nice to have. You don't spend extra money making your front yard look nice if you can't pay your mortgage, and we need to focus on what's important.
Yeah, I, the the idea of having the project shovel-ready is that, you know, grants come up, federal earmarks.
If it's shovel-ready, then we can go for some grants.
Exactly, so we have the ability to do that. Right now, we don't, because we don't have the engineering done, but we're gonna finish the engineering up. The other thing, I'll, you know, just to, and I hate to belabor the point about the reserves, but the idea that twenty thirty-five, the sales tax agreement goes away, that's forty percent of the forty-five percent of our total amount of revenue. That's a scary thing if we're also gonna be pulling more money out of reserves, and then we've got this fiscal thing also looming on top of all this other stuff, so that's, that would be just my last comment on the reserve stuff.
Yeah, no, I I think we all would love to find a way to save it, but I also think that there's been many, many years where we've not had these kinds of particular problems where we've been able to have.
You know, by doing this, it doesn't alleviate the problem. We're, we're still gonna have to figure out a way.
This just gets us, this just gets us through June, and then, yeah, we're gonna have to do some big problem solving, for sure. I would, I'd love to have a plan by end of summer on exactly how we're gonna.
And and I think we seriously, right now, I mean, I think now is the time where we think about putting things on the ballot. You, you said your revenue opportunities. Um, well, we have to think about the T O T, Airbnb. Um, you know.
Yeah, so the, the deadline to put anything on the ballot is July third, I believe, and so that we're asking council for direction to consider, to continue to, you know, to look at this. We, we need to bring that back. I need to do the analysis. Gretchen is actually working with our, this, the sales tax consultant, who also has a short-term rental arm, H D L, which is the sales tax forecasting throughout the whole state. Um, their short-term rental arm has given us an estimate of what the T O T to increase from eight percent to ten percent would be, that's about two hundred and fifty thousand-ish. Uh, and they're working on the Airbnb portion of that. Right now, we get nothing for Airbnbs. There's at least sixty of them within the city. If you look at just the Airbnb app, that's not even VRBO. Uh, and so not all of them are directly inside the city, but they're pretty close. And so that's a significant amount, you know, potentially double that, right? So we get up to five hundred thousand of new revenue. We won't see that overnight. There's a gap in reporting and doing all that, making sure people know, and we'll have to keep H D L on to do that for us, because we don't have the staff capacity to do those audits, make sure that people are paying, so. But they get paid the same way that they get paid with the sales tax stuff, where they basically make it up on the the stuff that they find and 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 get it over to us. There's a little bit of a cost, but.
Yeah.
It's important for, I think that, you know, like, when we're talking about taking money from Old Town and Downtown, reallocating ARPA and doing all this stuff, it's, I think it's important to look at revenue at the same time, and not only look at cuts. I do also think, though, that we need to be realistic about if we're going to the electorate and asking for something, we need to show that we're making changes, right? Like, you can't, we can't ask for something without saying, these are the actions that we've already taken, and we still need your help. It's important to do.
I agree one hundred percent with that, and Sean, you and I have had this discussion over and over again. And I really, just going forward, we have got to do some serious deep-dive work, some very difficult work and analysis before we can go to the electorate and ask for help, because we got ourselves in this mess, we gotta get ourselves out, and I'm not saying we can't diversify our revenue. I've, I've I've always thought about, you know, the the T O T, we should have passed it years ago, and it failed when it went before the ballot, that I wasn't on the. years ago and it failed when it went before the ballot that I wasn't on the council at that time, but the council put it forward and it failed.
And Airbnb.
And Airbnb, they never, because it's, yeah, they, well, and they were new, I guess, before. I don't know why they didn't get folded in, but but I think that we've got some work to do before we can go to the electorate.
Yeah, and then I sales tax, business gets hit again.
See, I view.
Take away the ARPA money, we take away the beautification and we hit them with tax.
See, I I view this as different because we're talking about TOT and Airbnb. Those are not a sales tax.
No, they're not.
We're not asking the community. We're asking the people who visit here to pay the same amount of taxes that they pay in other places. No, I'm talking about these two.
Oh, yeah, those are.
Those two.
But I'm just saying that.
I I want to make sure those two get on the ballot first because that's not asking our communities for us. That's asking us to have the same revenue sources every other city that we just haven't bothered to do. So that.
I understand that. I totally understand that. And that is why someone like me who was a fiscal conservative has not been opposed to a TOT. It's just the timing of it for me. Because and the fact that the matter is, it's still going to the electorate, asking them to pass a tax. Even though it may not be them specifically paying, we are asking them to support a tax measure. And to me, before I'm ready to go to the electorate and ask that, we got to get our house in order. That's just my opinion. But, you know, I think right now, today, what we need to do is we need to give direction on what we're in now, which is this budget. And so I'm I'm prepared to to take that action as to what we need to do for this year. And I know we're going to have closed session and we're going to have a lot of opportunity to kind of talk about what's going to happen going forward. That today is not the final say for that, but I do think we do need to give direction on what to do now for this fiscal year's disaster.
So so the the request from staff, feedback and direction is the basically the second to the last slide, right? So it's use of general fund revenues, about a million dollars worth, reallocation of the ARPA money. And then that's basically that because we're fleshing out the budget and we need to figure out how to plug this 1.9 million dollar hole that adds up to 1.9 million. Gretchen said, and I know for sure that that 1.9 is going to be coming down. I don't know exactly what the what it'll be, if it's 1.6, 1.5. I don't know what that is, but just in discussions with department heads. Sorry, and figuring out what else we can cut out of each department budget. We'll be able to decrease that that amount. But at this point, we need to know if you're okay with those those shifting that general from reserve and the ARPA stuff. And, you know, it would also be good, frankly, if council, if you give us direction, if if we end up at 1.5, 1.6, whatever that is, the delta from the 1.9 that you have now for you, where would you like that money to be restored back, right? Because right now we're proposing to make it up with ARPA money and with the reserves. And it would be good for you to say, if it's 1 point, whatever it is, restore money to the reserves or restore money to ARPA. Where do you want? Where do you want the money to go back into?
So you're saying that if we make these cuts now and we find out in 15, 20, 30 days.
Will we present the next budget?
Not as bad.
Right.
If we where we'd want to restore those funds.
Right. Because when we come, when we bring back the budget on June 10, this 1.9 is going to be less. I don't know how how much less, but it will be less. And so what I what I like to know is where do you want to put that money back into?
And throughout the year, even after we approve the budget, the dollar amount may go down because this is assuming that all of the staffing stays where it is. And we inherently just have people who leave their positions and have vacant positions for six months and things like that. So things change.
But that's that's for the next year. He's talking about if the if the deficit today, actually, we find out, let's just say in 30 days, that instead of being 1.9, we're at 1.5. But if we make the cuts today or whatever.
This is 2425.
No, he's talking, he's talking, are you talking about next year or this year?
We're talking about next.
I'm talking about 2045.
We're 24, we're talking about 2425.
Okay, I thought you were talking about this year.
So that's the worst worst case scenario. It'll get better between now and June, and then it'll probably change over the course of the actual fiscal year. So we'll be doing what we can to decrease costs inherently. Some positions stay vacant while you look to rehire them if we rehire those positions. And so things change over the course of the year. So in general, I mean, the hard thing.
I think I think I think our deadline, like our trigger points are going to be, I need, if we are able to shave the 1.9 for fiscal year 2425 down to 1.5, there's a $400,000 difference between what we think it is now and what it is, what it ends up being, whatever that is. Do you want us to continue to take out the 1.9? So we've got a cushion, put back into reserves? Or do you want to put that that cushion, that gap?
It's still a deficit, though. I mean, I mean, even if it's 1.9 and it's reduced down to 1.4, we still got to find, you know, 1.4 million dollars. So I'm not willing to fund anything back. It, I mean.
It would go into reserves.
Yeah, it would go back. That's the only thing.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, reserves, absolutely.
And I think just for, I mean, ease of using the ARPA money, we need to get it spent so we can say it's spent. So that needs to, I think, go over to the city. If we decide to give any money at a later date to Old Town and Downtown, it can just come from the general fund. I just don't want to worry about having this ARPA money sitting out there and trying to figure out if we're going to use it or not, and then we end up losing it. So I think it's appropriate for us to utilize the ARPA money and then knowing that we'd like to fund these projects when we're available to fund them. I think that makes the most sense.
Right. And then the process of figuring out how to balance and remove the ongoing structural deficit future years, that takes place once we get this budget finished and done. Report back, there's, you know, the last slide that Gretchen had is basically back and, you know, we come back in August when the fiscal year is actually closed and we have preliminary numbers available. We do progress reports telling you where we're at, September, October, we do the same thing when the quarter ends. And then we're going to continue to come back to council at least once a quarter and give you an update on where we are and how things are looking. Right? We'll do the.
Because we get updates on where our taxes are, how our staffing numbers are looking, all of that.
Exactly.
Change it as we go.
And then we'll do the normal midyear budget update and that needs to be, you know, at least hopefully flat, depending on where things are at. But we'll do the midyear budget update, see how things are going. And hopefully the deficit is not getting any bigger, right? Because we need to get things fixed, so.
Okay.
But we're intending to come back quarterly to council and give you updates.
Okay.
And the audit is going to get done in a timely fashion for the 23.
Yes.
No more two and a half years or whatever.
So so, okay, once we get, if we if we do have excess funds, it'll go back to reserves, but we're economic uncertainties or employee unfunded liability.
It'll go back into the economic uncertainty.
Okay.
That's that makes the most sense.
That's only one.
Yeah. So, I mean, with regards, so really, we just need to take, again, we you need us to to take action with regards to how to build a deficit for this year.
Just direct.
So which is, and I would just make a motion that we adopt the recommendation of staff with regards to this year's deficit, which is the ARPA and the the reserves.
And that any any amount that changes goes back into the economic uncertainty? Fund?
Yes. I mean, that's just for this year. I'm talking about this year's suggestions.
2425 suggestion.
No.
No, just this year right now.
No, this is the, we're all talking about 2425. This this year is done. We're talking about 2425.
But he wants the suggestions for right now, right?
For 2425.
Or 2425.
This whole.
2324, the, yeah, it's all this upcoming years.
Okay, so because 2324, we've already.
We're done pretty much with that. It is what it is. So your motion is to.
Yeah. Well, no, go ahead. I'm.
The motion is to use general fund reserves, 293,420 from economic uncertainties, 500,000 from employee unfunded liability.
Wait, wait, wait. What page is that on?
That's on the very last page.
Second law.
250,000 from pension unfunded liability, zero from the unassigned fund balance. Zero from prepaid insurance costs and then 750 from Old Town and Downtown and 131,000 from the city scanning.
And then any remaining funds when you come, when we come back from, when the budget returns would go.
It just decreases the total deficit, but it could, it shows up in the economic uncertainties.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second? Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
So who made the motion?
Sandy Mar. Councilmember Dauden Calvio.
Aye.
Amara.
Yes.
Holmes.
Aye.
Sierra Sammons.
Aye.
Mayor Riddell Harris.
Aye.
I have a question.
Okay.
Earlier this evening, we voted to join this camp.
Oh, yeah.
Program. Which means investing money in that. Now, my question is, how much money do we have in Leif? And.
Gretchen's going to answer your question.
Good evening. So we have in Leif right now, as of April, we have about 13 million dollars.
Okay, is there some way we can use some of that money to?
That's all included in the budget.
It's already all included in the citywide financial situation that we're in. So it's not different money. It's we have bank accounts and we have the county pool and we have Leif. And together that makes up approximately 18 million citywide. All of that has been earmarked, not earmarked, but it's part of our budget already. The general fund has five, six million of that. The sewer fund has eight million or so of that. And it's all been restricted based on the type of fund that it's in. So it's not additional money, unfortunately. Now, the investment yield we get from it, sure, moving forward, if we make money, that'll definitely help our situation. But we, it's, it's all been balanced in our budget already.
It's not just free cash laying around.
What's that?
It's not just free cash laying around. It's already been incorporated into the budget and into the reserves.
Or it's restricted funds that we can't access for the purposes.
Right.
Well, I know if I have a personal finance problem, I go to my savings.
That's what we're doing. We, that's what the.
So using the reserves is doing.
Reserves are, we have a savings account. We're opting to put a million dollars from our savings into paying for.
Or I go out and get a loan. Or I sell something. No, I don't think we want to sell any buildings, but.
Given our financial situation, I don't know if anyone will give us a loan right now. So 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 we're going to work on, we were, we were good in the past. We put our savings in the bank account. Just like anyone who has an unexpected issue with their finances, we're using the savings account. And then hopefully we'll balance our books and we won't have this issue moving forward. Any other comments? Okay.